Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Carl Stromeyer.
Mike Gardner.
Jamie Percy.
William Trapp.
You know, rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Public comment. Pro of minutes. Warrants, correspondence, transfer station end of year report, transfer station status of applicants and new hire, personnel policy updates and possible approval, future remote meeting discussion and schedule, discussion regarding residents contacting outside vendors, emergency services discussion and plan for public input, public comment, executive contractual, executive contractual, and executive personnel. Angie.
So I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, no changes. All those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, any public comment here?
No hands up.
No hands? Uh, approval of minutes, minutes of August eighth, two thousand twenty-four select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, questions, comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Minutes of August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four structural select board meeting. Just one we added. Angie.
I'll move. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Same.
That's sorry.
Accounts payable August sixteenth, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Accounts payable August twenty-third, twenty-five thousand three dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Payroll August sixteenth, eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Payroll August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, we have an email, uh, correspondence email from Qualified Ventures requesting time in the next regular select board meeting to present and offer servicing.
Um, so it says, hi Tara, great to talk with you and thank you for helping us get on the September twelfth agenda. As I mentioned, we are partnering with Vermont D E C to provide free technical assistance, water infrastructure, asset management, planning, and compliance to small municipalities, fire districts, and mobile home communities. See the attached file with details, which I sent to you all. Um, I've reached back out to them to ask specifically if they can help us with our transfer station, clean water, um, studies that we're doing. We have, um, current P F O S investigation that's happening over there, so I have not heard back, but it might be something that you all wanna hear from them, what, what services could be offered to town.
My feeling on the, on this is, um, also there's, there's two definite areas of need in the town for, um, drinking water, right? So even if they can't help with that, if they're on drinking water type of thing, we definitely could use some help, in my opinion, here in the center and, um, in the other corner. Yeah, that's right. So I think it would be great to have them come in for fifteen minute presentation on the twelfth and we can, you know, maybe, and maybe it's nothing, maybe it's a waste, gonna be a waste of fifteen minutes of our time, but at least it's something that we're, we can look at and.
I don't think it'll be a waste of our time.
I, I don't either.
I think, I think it'll be, even, even if we, whatever happens, we'll have more information than we did when we went into it.
Exactly. So that's why I think, you know, if it's, I, I wasn't even thinking a lot about the, the transfer station and the landfill. I was thinking about the, the drinking water, that's right.
That's important too.
Yep, yep, that's what my, my, so I think, um, unless anybody has an objection, I think we have them come in on the twelfth.
Should we let them know that our most concern would be drinking water so that we've got to prepare on drinking?
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah, I think there's two areas of concern, right?
Right.
She's already reached out about the transfer station, but drinking water for two definite areas of need in, in town.
Yeah.
The center and, and so, yeah, that's a great idea.
Reach out to those two issues.
Gonna do. All right, transfer station end of year report. Everybody get a chance to read that?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm surprised Thompson's here. I thought he would be here. He said he was coming, so I don't know if you wanna just discuss it without him or plan for him to come back. That might be him coming right now, actually.
Play on that.
Yeah, I know he planned on being here.
That's him.
We'll give him a couple of minutes. Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
You gonna hold us up? I'm going to go.
Quick, right to the other side.
Well.
Can we jump to?
No, because we voted to accept it in order. We have to accept it in order.
That's fine.
I think.
Hang out here and stare at him when he comes in.
All right. Our, our people that come in on agendas, they better, they're gonna understand where you're going through this stuff now.
Been through lately.
Okay.
File right here. You caught up a moment down? Range? There was several remote meeting about make it.
Maybe. Come on, I've been to all of them.
Brother Ralph.
I'm. I'm probably getting my other hip, I told her so. I've all been, I've all been pieces and parts except for a little grease on this one. Mr. Schu, you can slide right up here.
Off right off. Well, how about?
Oh, no, you don't have to sit there. We, we would insist that you. Up there you go.
The man of the hour. That's very good. I say it in a nap and my wife forgot I had to get up here. She started cooking.
Well, you.
Oh, I forgot, it's okay.
Get ready toward and you can go home to dinner.
All right. I grabbed it quickly. When you remember.
I didn't, I sent it to them and I just break that water. We have it. They have it.
Okay. What we have here is a little comparison from the last couple of years, the permit sales for July. Because I just wanna see how, because of the raising the price and so forth, how many we sold just in this month, because that's all I have to compare for this year so far. And you see, we, we've been a little lax in twenty-four, twenty-five compared to the last three years. And, you know, the sixty dollars, we were still ahead on that one in cash. But, uh, I think we have hit the absolute limit for permit costs. I just don't think this town's gonna take much more. I just, I'm just not seeing it. You know, the interest in it. And then when everybody got their tack goes, I'm really here. Gotta be quite honest with you, but that's, that's not your fault or my fault or anything else. But, uh, so you can see that what we had done in twenty-one, twenty-two, and permits along was eighteen, six eighty, twenty-two, twenty-three was twenty thousand, six eighty, and then twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty-five thousand, three fifty. And, uh, I'm just hoping that we can keep in that, you know, like the five hundred uh, customer, because we don't, we don't wanna lose that many more customers, really. Now, our total annual sales over the last three years, you know, from twenty-one, twenty-two, right? And now I've been backing out this to see what the trash costs are, right? So what we have on that is on twenty-one, twenty-two, our trash cost is sixty-seven thousand, three twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three is seventy-two thousand, three forty-nine, which is an increase of eight point one six percent. The twenty-three, twenty-four is seventy-six thousand, five hundred and four, which is an increase over the twenty-two, twenty-three of eight point six six percent. But our costs, uh, the last, last two years has gone up under about forty-five hundred dollars and we're, we're gaining, you know, at least that much, you know, in, in increases. So I think we're pretty well covered decked. But when I looked at some of this tiny, I was rather surprised today. I, I was doing some of the, I did what I was doing today about the tines and so forth. You know, we had, uh, this, this past year, we ended up with recycling, we recycled a hundred thirty-six or a hundred one thirty-six point four oh tons and landfill two thirty-six point three five tons. Now, what it comes down to, is, you know, that was.
What was that number tied to what?
It was two thirty-six, thirty-five.
Okay.
Right? Now, what we did the year before, you know, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a phenomenal, uh, second quarter and I, I did realize that I should have known because we had so many free dump days. Came in in June, it was unbelievable. We didn't get, we might have ten, twelve a day, you know, and so forth. But the, the increase in just the, uh, the, the last quarter for that year went to seventy-nine thousand, four forty, seventy-nine, seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine point four oh tons. And it increased the, the landfill tons in the previous year to two sixty-one point nine, which is quite a significant increase, you know, because I looked at some of the other years, it wasn't all that, it's not all that great. And the, uh, the recycle was one forty-five, six nine. You know, so we had a decrease in that, but really it's, it was pretty much that the last, the last quarter, you know, uh, April, May, and June, that just, it just went nuts the year before. Last year, I mean, it was, it was pretty calm. It's, I mean, it's usually a little bit more than the other ones, you know, a lot of times. But, uh, it really went crazy. So all in all, I think we're in pretty good shape as far as the, uh, the cost for bags and so forth. I think we're, we're fine now. Uh, the, you know, the permits, you know, we'd have to see how it goes at the end of the year. That's, that's all we can do with that. But really, as far as things go, the costs are really aren't, aren't as bad as they, they could have been. I, the increase, and part of the problem, so is the increase happened at January first this year, where before it was always on April first. So, you know, so we, we picked, I got three more months of increase, uh, this year. Now, I do wanna say our, the last two, last two months, our mattress costs have dropped significantly. For mattress, they have, uh, they have dropped, however, to twenty dollars. However, the couches, we're now getting charged couches, twenty dollars. So that's what we charge, so.
Everything is off.
Sorry. Jake, I will talk to you later. Uh, so I think that, uh, you know, if you wanna look at that and reducing that back, so the, because the people, you know, are not too happy about paying forty dollars for a mattress.
Taking the medical.
If we're being charged forty, we should be, but if we're being charged twenty, then we should be charging what we are charged. I, I think. And we increased it because we were being charged forty every year.
Yes, yeah, we, we did appreciate that, but now, you know, we're not being charged that, I think. That's one of the things I think that you might find along the road a little more often.
Oh, we haven't.
No.
We haven't done.
Do we track that?
Uh, the, the highway department brings them in, dumps them, I, I don't.
Well, usually the complaint comes in the.
Correct. I just. We turn around and track the stuff that we bring in. That way we could actually get a handle on exactly what, if there was an issue or not. Right now, we don't know there's an issue or not.
You're actually right, Carl. Uh, you know, I, I have no idea what you're doing because that's, you know, I made it. Now, some people, uh, they have this year, so it's already, you know, brought in a mattress and it picked up alongside the road. We take that free, you know, I mean, you know, nobody's brought one in since July first. We had a couple last year. You know, you could see they were sitting outside for a long time and, you know, and a citizen picked it up and said, we can't, you know, I can't stand it through. They threw it out my front yard. And you can see it's been thrown out there, you know, and he said, I said, over the town, I'll pick it up. I just, I got my neighbor's truck on, brought it up myself. You know, but I usually try to keep track of those things because for our greenup day, we have a group here called Panel Crowd. It takes, takes, you know, uh, they pick up a lot of stuff along roads. They have certain stretch of roads that they handle and bring itself in. When I do that, I usually write that down. So at the end of the thing, I do my greenup day, you know, that we have in May, the first Saturday in May, I add all that in. And I've talked to Kate about that. She said, that's wonderful, you know. She just thinks it's terrific the way we do things. There, you know, we have a certain group, a certain core of people that do this all the time and it's just, you know. I, I, I think it's great. I mean, you know, I'm certainly not gonna charge them, so I give them the greenup bags. That's why I got so many greenup bags. Here, use this, don't use your own bag, you know, we get them, I get, uh, two hundred a year. So I hand them out to those folks and then we, and we got a couple of the greenup bags. We got too many green, I just mark them down and so forth. So I put that, put all that in and, and write them off with roads, you know, that they're kind of, which where they get this. They get a lot, they get a lot of stuff up in the tubs. There's an awful lot, like Carl going away, that does down here on that North panel road. Picks up the stuff. There's a lot of people in Barrington, because we, people that want, like in Barrington, you know, they park one and they walk down and they can walk back up. And they'll take the bag and pick up stuff too. So anything that they bring up, of course, we want that, you know, if you're cleaning up, we'll, we'll take it. You know, I, that's, well, I always thought that the wish of the board would be, you know, we accept that free. We're gonna, we're gonna be kind enough to clean this up up. I think we should be kind enough to accept it for, for free.
As long as we track it.
Yeah.
As long as everything is tracked, because we should, we, we're in a position, we should be able to track the mattresses that are picked up, the mattresses that are picked up by the town, the mattresses that you have people bringing to you, so you're already tracking those, just so that we know, because then we don't know if there's a problem if we don't have the data to show that we have a problem.
Perhaps I should do, talk to Joel, you know, maybe tomorrow or next week someday and have this, say, listen, let's make a, a sheet, you know, per month. If you're picking stuff up, just give me the sheet every month, just, you know, basically what road it's on, how much you pick up. You know, and give it to me and, uh, then I'll, I'll enter then. I was like, I said, I just had a sheet and I just took it all up. Put it, put it all together for, when our report is, you know, for greenup day.
Yeah.
Send that to Kate.
And people will know where the problem places are. Maybe they'll keep an eye on them better.
Change our cameras.
Cameras there.
Yeah, and that'll give us a good, a good data point on where to put cameras.
That'd be great to have cameras, but, you know, as long as we can get some, we'd be great to get some convictions around here for some of this, you know.
Got a little spot.
Yeah. You got some spot. You guys, you guys lived here longer than I have, so you know, you know where a lot of this was. I mean, you don't wanna go down there from the, the pool off down there.
There's one down there. Absolutely one down there.
I heard it was like a hundred, forty, two hundred ton. I don't know how you get them up. Yeah. You'd have to have a, a rucker, you know, or something like that, down there, tie a bunch of hill and drag them up. You know.
Anybody have any more questions on the end of the year report from?
Nope. So I have, I was waiting for the end of the year report to bring this up. Um, something I've thought about for a long time about the transfer station and it's, it's been on my mind for a while and I just wanted to bring it up at the right time. I think it's time that uh, we reach out to the Solid Waste Commission. Maybe they have somebody or, or maybe we need to hire a private consulting firm that comes in and looks at our transfer station and says to us, you're doing a wonderful job. We're all good. Or they say, you can, you can tighten this up or that up. To me, our balance is too far apart. Our cost versus our income, and I, I, it's never gonna be flat. I understand that and I mean that and I totally understand that. But our cost of operating the transfer station in Town and Pounder versus our income and what we get back from it is too far apart. And, and maybe, maybe that's the way it is. I don't know. I'm, I'm not a transfer station expert. I have no clue. I just think it's time that we reach out to the Solid Waste Commission or, or. Find out what comparables are around. Or, or maybe, maybe we need to hire, maybe we need to reach out and hire their private consulting firm. This is what they do for a living. They come into transfer stations, they look things over and they say, you look it. Okay, so don't charge the twenty dollars for the mattress or forty dollars for the mattress, but charge forty dollars over here for this. Or, or you see what I'm saying, Tom? And I'm, and I'm not faulting you, okay? So please don't take it that way.
No, no, mine.
I just think it's time, I just think it's time that for me to sit here and, and every year when we come up at budget time, we know that the transfer station outgo is here and we know our income is down here. And I just think we, I think we need, maybe we can't, I just think we need to do our due diligence to try to get that balance more on, more on, in an even keel. And like I said, I don't believe it's ever gonna happen. I don't think.
Again, it can't possibly happen.
Well, but it can get closer. But I, I think it can get close.
Yeah, well, I mean, when you're looking at what we're paying just for, uh, the, the, the fees that we have to pay for the, for the closed landfills and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Put that in if we can't, we can't possibly get it to cover all those extra.
I totally understand. I just think, I just think we need as a board, we need to do our due diligence to try to get that balance closer. And, and maybe we can. And I just think.
Not sure who to get, because.
Well, I think that's our job, right? That's, that's.
We have a solid waste alliance meeting here, uh, in two weeks, you know, first Wednesday, uh, next month.
Yes.
So we can, uh.
Well, we have a contact person there, right?
Oh, yeah, I've got people there. They don't know how to operate.
So, so here's, here's, here's my suggestion.
They're, they're relying on, well, me for some of these things.
I understand.
So, because, I mean, uh, see, with Shasberg runs around the transfer station, we run it. Uh, Southernland, in our intent, that's Casellas, Bennington's Casellas, it's gonna run by Casellas, so.
Here's, here's my suggestion to the board, and actually we should make a motion on this if we so choose. I would like to have Tara reach out to our Solid Waste Alliance, see if they have someone that they use or, or someone they could suggest or whatever, a company, a firm, a couple of companies or whatever, and bring it back to us on September twelfth and then we can make a decision if we wanna move forward with that at, at that time. I just, I just think it's time to do it. Are we looking so that, and that, as, we, we're gonna get names, but it's just so that it's clear in my brain. We're looking for somebody to help us with our efficiencies. Exactly. Running, uh, if we can get our system to run more efficient. Exactly. More cost effective. Yes. Yep, exactly, Carl. That's a great way to put it. That's exactly what I'm looking for. And not that we aren't, maybe, maybe we are. Maybe we're doing a great job. I'm, I don't know. But let somebody tell us that. Let somebody that does it for a living tell us that, you know, let somebody that, let somebody that's, that, that's in that business, right? It's like, it's like when you're plumbing your house, you don't hire the electrician to do your plumbing, right? You know, same thing, so.
Um, maybe, maybe really to contact somebody to sell us, because that is their business, because you're talking about the experts.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what the alliance is gonna tell us to contact so-and-so, Casella, and they'll help you out. I, I don't know, Tom. I just think I'd like to entertain a motion that, that we have Tara reach out to the alliance. To get some names. And possibly get some names and bring it back to us on the twelfth and if at all possible, it would be great to have a price on what it would cost. I will make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. No more discussion? Any questions down there? I, I think Carl's got it nailed down, cost effective, efficient operation. Try to get that back.
I don't wanna reinvent everything. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we are running it, uh, on all cylinders.
Yep, exactly. That's all I want. Perfect. I have a motion, I have a second. No more discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. And like I said, you know, it's nothing to do with you. It's just, I think we need, it's, it's, it's one of the business, right? The town is a business, the transfer station is a business. You gotta try to run everything, especially the way the taxes are, and then you gotta try to run it as efficient as you can.
Well, I, I tell everybody, and I can tell you what I'm sounding more, trust me.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. We should pay you extra.
You know, I'm, I'm the, the face, basically, you know, the P T C. And, uh, you know, I said, listen, it's not the town, it's the school tax. Yeah, that's one.
Oh, it is.
We shot it up. Is that, is that a correct answer?
Yes.
Exactly.
All I gotta do is look at their tax bill and see the difference.
Yeah, they don't. They said, oh, the town taxes. No, it's not.
I think I'm gonna do another pie chart that shows.
That should do that, that shows that.
They asked me to do that and I just didn't do it, so I think.
No, I, I, I actually deflected that off, I think, rather well, and, I mean.
That's an easy deflection though, because it's the truth, right?
It is true.
It is.
That's the truth. I said, you know, you, you keep voting for the school, but it's totally easy. I guess.
That's right.
All right, we gotta, anything on the, uh, on the personnel thing? They're gonna have something later.
Next on the.
Next on the agenda. Next on the agenda. Yeah, I'm trying to get, I wanna get to.
Uh, transfer station status of applicants and new hire discussion.
So without saying any names, we did have one applicant that was a previous employee. Um, you guys can decide if you wanna do an interview or not. Maybe we can talk about that in the personnel later. However, even if you do decide to interview this person, we need to come up with a plan for coverage for the ongoing, while we figure it out, or if we find out if our employee is coming back or whatever.
How, how are we at? And I apologize to you, Bill, and Tom, both of us should have reached out to both of you guys and since we, you know, had that, had the temporary setup, and I apologize, you know, blurry, but I can't really see what I need to read. It's driving me crazy. How, how are we working now with, with our current situation?
Well, it's working. It really is. Uh, maybe we, you, we can, we came up, said this morning, I was finishing this thing and, uh, we loaded refrigerators, because you just, it was just too much, too much work for us to do for work, you know, and he's over here in the morning and I can't come back. It's, it's a two man job.
I understand. Yeah, I just, I was curious how things are working now.
Think about calling them. It's my very son. Oh, then later. You know.
I, in the interim right now, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see it, maybe even for another, we're not gonna do an interview until next week at the, at the earliest, no matter what. You know, we're not gonna do one tomorrow. I'm not.
And I just got the application yesterday, so it wasn't even like a, let me set up an interview real quick.
Right, so, uh, you know, we should be able to go over it first and then, and then if we wanna set up an interview, then we should. Right. Um, if, if what we're doing right now is working, if we could run it another, I, I hate to say another two weeks, but.
It's actually.
Three weeks, that's what I thought. The next meeting is September twelfth, right? Yeah.
Well, Ron should have some questions for me, uh, was in the next week too.
So does that, does that work for you at this point? Another, so our next regular? That work alright for you, Bill?
Yeah, I probably just take Mondays off.
Okay.
Just, uh.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yep.
Just instead of taking overtime.
Yeah.
Instead of paying the overtime out, we could.
I, I can run that by Joel, but I don't think that's a problem. I, you know, I don't think it's a problem at all. I just hate to jump in with both feet without knowing where we're at, especially with, you know, Ron's only a week out, then, then I'd rather not, you know.
I don't, I don't.
I know, I understand. I understand.
He, he does have a lot more mobility and so forth, but, uh, he said, and he, he told, he told us the other day when he was there, um, there, that, uh, he was saying, I will not come back if I cannot safely get into that machine.
And I would not want him to come back.
Doctor's release period.
But he's, I mean, he's looking at it in safety.
Right.
Safety, he's looking at it, but he wants to back to work, of course. But he's not gonna do it in an unsafe manner. I just wanted to let you.
We realize that.
I mean, he's got, he's got the right attitude about it. He really does. That's, that's kind of admirable. I mean, he's quite admirable. I don't think he's gonna be similar to Dr. Dan Quinn anyhow, because he's a.
Should be careful about using, we're, you know, no, no more names.
No more names.
We're gonna open session.
Open.
My doctor too.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Tom. Bill, will this work?
That's the other one.
Oh, you try the one we got today?
Not yet, no.
We found a TV down there where we were doing something that actually came along. We took it up and it looked like it was brand new in a box. So.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Personnel policy updates and possible approval.
Oh, I sent those to you with the updates, the specific sections that were updated. It was twelve thirteen. Um the travel and mileage was added. Continuing education was changed slightly. Everything addendum C at the end was changed to show the insurance coverage change. The holiday part changed to add Juneteenth. Those were like additions we had made last year that never got put into the.
Yep. The performance evaluations.
Yes, yep, that wasn't in there as far as doing them.
Personnel records.
Yep.
You said town commitment. That was, that all looked really good to me, Tara.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions, concerns on that personnel policy?
No. No.
I entertain a motion to approve the personnel policy as written.
Second.
One second. Uh have any one more discussion? All in favor? Future remote meeting discussion and schedule? That's, I I asked for that. Um I would like to. Um and I thought about this, I I've emailed back about, you know, I would like to go to um town of states. I'd like to set up a meeting um at the top of the hill. And obviously weather dependent, right? Because we don't have foreign rain, but they don't have a community center type thing. Even if we bring down a little tent, pop up or whatever, but I'd like to, I'd like to give um residents in that area. And I saw you thinking about all the trailer parks, so we could do Cozy Meadow. You know, we can move there and and Royal Pine. Um.
I got a question. Kyle play devil's advocate here. Will we do this for every rental property in town home?
Well, I I think, that's a good question, Paul, and and I.
I think we're, I think we're getting, I think we're getting.
I think uh what I'm, what I'm, what I'm really trying to do with this is I'm really trying to get into. Um more populated areas. Okay, so, so I'm not really trying to get into just a rental area, right?
But but that's what you're doing.
Well, not, not necessarily, because we could, we could have a remote meeting. At the warehouse in North Palm. And we could cover a lot of people in that area if they wanted to come, right?
Can I just ask a question? We have open meeting every other week. Why can't the people come to the open?
Why don't they? Why do they email us? Why, why do they, why do they get on public comment? Why aren't they sitting in one of the five chairs over there? Why are Becky and Jason the only two here tonight? I I there's. Angie, if I could answer that question, I'd be running for president right now no matter what, and I win eighty percent of twenty about all of them, right? I can't answer that question. I, and I wish I could. I wish I could get more town involvement. I don't know. If if we don't wanna do any more remote meetings, I'm fine with that too. That's, it's just.
I think we should think about, if we do another remote, maybe have a remote meeting down at the library. Maybe, I should say, once a month, but have something down there. So that the whole area will have now access if.
Like maybe once a quarter.
Once a quarter.
Or even making sure that the full board attends things like Celebrate Panel or. Events like block party. Those are ways to make good community connections without necessarily making it a meeting.
That's true. That's true. I mean, there's a lot of things we could do, right? There's a lot of things we could all do about attending different things.
I'm just afraid with the remote meeting down at Powell's States, that they'll be asking us questions. That pertain to the park and not the town.
But if they do. If they do, we can take and clarify that, I guess, and because some people may not know the difference of the responsibilities. I understand your hesitation as far as those kind of questions, but we could get them on a daily basis, just get them stopped.
Um I feel like. I do feel that if we do for for one, that we should do it for all and.
I'm just.
I mean, even if we wanna do a special um, a special community. Same, but if we set up in satellite locations.
I don't have a problem with doing a remote, like once a quarter or whatever, a different, different spots.
But I but I think that is, I think that would be more as effective. Turn around and have a once a quarter meeting um down in town. Down in North Palm. Over in East Palm. We have the, we have the, there's the facilities there.
Right, because winter's gonna be given, you know.
Unfortunately. And I'm just concerned. Doing just a specific group of residents doesn't really. It can be, I don't know. It's just a little tricky to make it fair.
I agree.
Fair and successful.
I totally agree.
And I think we do in the remote with the um rescue squad and the fire departments, that is town. You know, base, people that help the community.
Community support.
Community support, right? So I think that.
That's fair. That's totally fair. So we can niche that, that's fine. I'm fine with it.
For now, do some more thinking about it.
If we don't do something right now, it's gone out the window.
No.
On that.
No.
Want to bet me?
Why don't you, why don't at the next?
If you don't schedule, if you, if you don't say, and say that we're gonna do one a quarter, or we say we're gonna do. If we say that we're gonna think about it, you know when this is gonna come up?
Never.
Never.
Let's do, let's do a quarter meeting for.
Bring the suggested schedule back to the next meeting.
There you go, perfect.
Early meetings, and I will even try to find a location for each of them.
That'll be good.
I I've been, I've been here running up, and I've seen enough meetings, and if you, if you put something out, oh, we'll come back to that. Yeah, maybe. Maybe my, maybe my grandkid will come back to it.
We'll always come back to it if I put it on my list.
I know that. I'm just saying, if we just let it go. I know that.
I put it on our list, please. Going on this. Thank you.
Um discussion regarding residents contacting outside vendors. So you saw was probably not the clearest in the world. Um although it probably was fairly self-explanatory. So when, and and a lot of this goes to the sheriff's department. So if someone has an emergency, we teach our kids to call nine one one. That that should go without saying, right? If someone has an emergency, I doubt if they dial the sheriff's department at four four, whatever the number is.
I hope you're not calling Becky either.
Yeah, that's right. If they have an emergency, they're not calling the rescue squad building, they're not calling Jason. I I'm sure, right? So so if someone has an emergency. That's fine, in my opinion. Like, call, call nine one one. That's right. That's what it is. If you're calling about a contract, or if you're calling to request services on on certain things.
Unrealistic.
Unrealistic services? That's what I'm talking about, and that's what we were talking.
That's what we were talking about, absolutely.
Unrealistic um contract questions, that's our job. That's our job. That's, that's Tara's job. That's Hannah's job. That's our job here.
I I got, I'll make it easy. If it has to do with the contract, the um patrols, complaints, and whatever. Anything on a contractual basis, call Tara. Other than that, call nine one one.
Right. Well, I think, I also.
Don't call the sheriff's department, because, because they shouldn't be calling the sheriff's department. Because if it has to do with anything with the contract, it has to go to Tara. Because she's the only one that can talk to them about patrol times and anything like that.
They could call for crime tips.
So so if someone, if someone sees, if someone sees um. And I'm gonna, you know, our our sheriff's department, you know, there's two guys down there most of the time, the same two. If you see them sitting on the side of the road and there's something going on next door to your house, I'm the first guy who's gonna tell you, stop there and let them know. Pull in, pull in where they're pulled over.
Right.
Pull it out of them.
Let them know. You know, let them know, hey, this is what's going on. That's different. That's different than calling the sheriff's department. You're pressing contract information. Right? Because that costs us money. It's different than calling up with an unrealistic request to patrol my road. An hour a day, every day of the week, or two hours a day, or whatever. Those are unrealistic things that cost the town money. Because we're getting billed for it.
By the terms of the contract. Only time anything can be, it has to go through Tara. By the terms of the contract. So if there's anything, not unreasonable, any concern about the contract. Call Tara. I hate to do that. All right. Not unreasonable, because, okay, if it's, if it's reasonable thing to do to call on a contract. Should they call the sheriff's department?
They should call us.
They should call us.
But my only concern was, we had one person in town that wanted twenty six thousand dollars worth of services. To their, and that's a quarter of our budget. So that one person wanted twenty six, that's what I have an issue with. If that person wishes to have that contract with the sheriff's office, they're gonna have to pay for it. We need our services to go to people that really need it. So I think it's just.
I I agree with you one hundred percent.
There are just.
The town as a whole.
But what I'm saying is, is that 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 person should contact. The town and demand those things. And we could bring it here to the more open meeting, and they can make their case to the public.
We could. That's definitely true, Carl.
All right, and let them make, I mean, but that goes to us, to the sheriff's department. Not call the sheriff's department, say, I want you to patrol my road one hour a day, seven days a week, and I don't care about anything else.
So and when, when I talk about outside vendors, and when we talk about outside, outside vendors. Uh if we have a tree service doing work on, uh I'm gonna use your road, Jason, Nile School Road. And you got a tree limb in front of your house, well, and the town contracted him to do everything in front of. I'm gonna throw in that, a a number, and I don't wanna offend anybody, but ten sixty six Nile School Road, that's where we contracted him. And they want, you know, and all of a sudden you stop them and say, hey, it's limb down by my house. No, that's not. That's, that's our job. You come to the board, or that person comes to the board and says, hey, this is what we need to do. Yeah, okay, maybe we do it. But then you don't stop and ask them to do that, or somebody did black popping, or whatever, whatever an outside vendor's doing. The the thing about it is, and I understand that people who are doing it.
If, if somebody has, I think, like, they could call that person that made the request before. If they have a specific time of the day that they want, they can advise the sheriff's office of what's happening. And what time happens. But they really should not demand that the service is provided to them.
Right.
And nobody, you know, it's the other people in town that are gonna really need it versus that one person.
And we're limited on the number of hours, obviously, anyway, so. I hope that clarifies it. I think we answered the questions. I hope that clarifies what some of the questions we had and concerned.
If not, maybe they'll ask during public comment.
That's right. That's right, and then we can write it down and answer it. We won't answer it tonight, under public. Emergency services discussion and plan for public input. It's on this one.
That's you, Tara.
Yep. So basically, I think that you should plan to get public input on emergency services in town. Um before we get into budgets and.
I, we had, we had a concern that is standing in an email, which was a great email and had a great point. Um I think that, um I think we continue to have you move forward with. What you've been researching and where we're at. And, you know, I don't, I don't wanna go backwards, right? So we keep moving forward. But I do think we schedule a public hearing. Um so that the residents of the town. Um do have some input on on what's going on. Um and and I also wanna put some rumors to rest here. The the select board. Is in no way, shape, or form trying to take over emergency services in town. That's, that's for our volunteers, and that's for those people. That's not for us, right? It's just, I I've been there. I know how much time it takes, and I appreciate. Every single one of the volunteers in this town, I know we all do, more than we can tell them.
But we are here to support them.
That's, and that's.
One hundred percent.
All we're trying to do is we are trying, at this point in time, what the select board is trying to do, and in my opinion, it should have been done years ago. And not that it wasn't tried, because I don't know, but I'm just saying. We're trying to help our emergency services in town find alternative funding. That doesn't cost the taxpayers of the town of panel any more money. If you guys jump in and correct me.
Or it might down the road. Otherwise, we might not have any emergency surgeries. Or services, not surgeries, services unless we try to help support.
I just think that it's our job to try to help them.
Help us.
Help, help the town, help the townspeople. And and if it's, if it turns out that it's through budgets and and ballot articles, and that's, and that's what we end up doing. Then that's what it is. But I think it's our job to try to help find some outside funding. Um that can get funneled through the town.
And creative things. That, you know what? There's a lot of things that everybody's doing separately that if we did together, we would end up saving money, and it's.
Fix fuel thing. So the fire department is getting discounted fuel from the town.
Yeah, we uh we had the meeting, we had the meeting in Palm two weeks ago.
That worked out well.
That's right. Now they're saving, they're saving a lot of money from having a, having a forty minute conversation. Um where they were buying their, their fuel at a, at a local station. And now they're getting it through the town at a significantly reduced rate, okay? Significantly reduced.
That's all services. Fire and rescue.
And so that's why we need to talk.
Not yet. Okay.
So um this, this popped up two weeks ago, right? That and and we. So the the conversation started a couple of weeks ago with that meeting. That's exactly where it started, right? Um one of the members in Palm brought up, um maybe all of the. Town entities, the fire departments, the rescue squad, the town offices. Okay, maybe we, maybe we put. At all the fuel oil out to bid, right? Because everybody uses fuel, oil, and propane, and whatever, right? That's where that ball started. And we came up with the determination that we're probably behind the eight ball this year, because we're now on first of September, and the pre-buy. Better rates and everything, we're kinda behind. So that's probably gonna happen next year, right? We can use ten thousand gallons, and you use ten thousand gallons, and we use ten. Well, if you're buying ten, you're getting X number of dollars. Now we're at forty, or thirty, or forty, or fifty thousand. Maybe we save five cents a gallon. I don't know. Five cents is five cents. No. So that's, you know, kind of a co-op buying type of thing. And then the fuel came up, the fuel issue came up in in that discussion and just. It was a very simple thing. It was a very simple thing to fix. So um.
And like, I wanna be clear, the fire departments are still paying for their fuel.
That's right.
Because when they get it through us, they don't pay um like a vendor price that like they would pay at stores.
Right, or any other stations, or a bottle of fuel, or wherever they would get it. Right. Yeah, you know, there's, there's a, there's a huge, huge price difference. So.
Yes.
Um so they're, you know, we're, we're already saving the money on. Trying, we're trying. I was just trying a lot of different things. And and a public hearing, one or two public hearings. Maybe somebody, maybe somebody's got some kind of an idea out there that, that who knows, best idea in the world, and man, this is gonna be golden, and. Taxpayers aren't gonna have to pay anything, and this is what's gonna happen. Unless they come forward now, but. Right?
Help educate them on some of the other stuff when our services have to offer and. How much it costs and all that too.
You wanna do um.
I'd like to schedule a public.
September or October. Probably.
When do we start budgets? I'm the newbie, so. I'm just, I know, I'm I'm asking because I.
Don't cry, I'm a cry.
So it has to be in October, if you wanna do before budget season.
Yeah, that comes to you end of November, it's probably, you know, we should do end of September, probably, for first.
Should we do the end of September, or should we do it, we have, our meeting, we don't have until the third week in September. Right? The twelfth is our first regular select board meeting. Do we have time to do it on the fifth?
Of September.
Yeah, or is that too soon?
That's not be too.
What do we rather do on the nineteenth?
Be too soon, because it's the nineteenth, doesn't it?
With nineteenth.
Alright, so we have to, sorry. Um. If we do it the nineteenth, we can't do it here, because V C R C has our.
I need something on the nineteen.
Um.
There you go. Have it down the rescue spot, Dylan.
Can we do everything that we need to do for a public hearing down there, zoom? Can we do everything that we need to do for a public hearing down there, Zoom lines and all that?
Yeah, because we did Zoom.
Just use a D R V down there.
Yeah, we did D R V Zoom down there, didn't we?
I'm just asking a question, because I wanna make sure we can Zoom it out there.
What's the building hold?
Sitting for nineteen.
That's my only question.
It's gotta hold as much as this.
Yeah.
Pretty cold.
Definitely holds.
You can pull the trucks out and go in the bay where it's more open.
Yeah, okay.
September nineteenth?
Yes. September nineteenth?
September, what time?
What's?
Six.
Six, is that okay?
Yeah.
Got it right back in there?
Six P M, September nineteenth.
Yep.
Jason, I have a question. Can you just, um, I think we're jumping the gun a little bit here, because we don't have a lot of information.
Yeah.
We really don't have any, except that we're just trying to explain to you folks, who are patiently waiting for a third year in a row for grant money, and we're getting feelings, you know?
Well, I.
We don't have any answers yet, we're just simply exploring, and we're looking for some help, and look at saving some money for, ultimately for the taxpayer.
So I think, I think a public hearing, and I agree with you, okay? I agree totally, because we don't have a lot of information. We're not providing any information, in case anybody's wondering that. There's no secret meetings going on behind closed doors. There's nothing, everything that's been said about all of this stuff has been in a meeting at either the rescue squad building, with the rescue squad in public session, open session, it's been said at the Palm Firehouse, or the Palm Valley Firehouse Center Station.
Yeah.
Or inside right here in this building. There's no secret.
People think there are.
That's right.
So there is not.
About them to come to neighbor meeting, you're saying.
So what I really wanna do is I wanna have a public hearing.
For public information.
And say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we're after, this is where we're at, which we don't wanna have a lot. Maybe by then we'll have a little more, I doubt it, but.
We can offer people where they're at currently, so instead of just having information at town meeting, we're doing this ahead of time, it kind of.
Right, and we'll do another one.
For ballot articles.
And then what you do with the article money and what it's used for.
The, the thing on yellow, with the cost of the equipment, things like that, any, anything you guys want printed, just send to me, and I'll print copies for people, and.
So you just wanna get it out there, Jason.
Get it out there, or somebody can stop saying that we're hiding.
It's more of an informational hearing, if you wanna put it like that, than it is for anything.
It's, you know, people can have public input, you know, I mean, you can have two hundred people say, hey, we like it the way it is, ballot article, and whatever, that, I mean, that's what it is, I, it is what it, you know?
And Jason, you guys recently, in the last few months, just started meeting all the chiefs in the county also, and you guys are working on a lot of the same issues that have been discussed, and you could share some of that too at these meetings. I mean, because.
Well, you said it all the time, you know, that hasn't happened.
So. But, that way people know that you're, you know, you guys are trying elsewhere.
And we're gonna go for an increase, it's a great time to put signatures.
So we'll reach out to, um, we'll reach out to Craig, and you guys can reach out to your departments.
To the nineteenth.
For the nineteenth at six o'clock, right? Does that work? Good, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Hannah, we have your public comment.
No hands up.
No hands?
I make a motion that we go into executive session for.
Contractual.
Contractual, contractual personnel. One.
One, oh, we do one at a time?
Yes.
Oh.
Hey, I'm the newbie here, okay?
Actual seconds.
Oh, I thought we could, like, do it all.
No, oh, no, we gotta come.
Oh, man, that sucks.
Somebody's second heading here.
Okay, contractual.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive for personnel.
So moved.
Back it up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertaining motion to come out of executive for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.